Tonight are public comments on work session related items. Take that out in just a minute. Discussion on golf carts, discussion on potential of another housing commission development. Done by Hollander Development. Discussion on the development authority, the Downtown Authority, DDA. Anybody have any comments on work session related items?
I do. Good evening, council. My name is Lisette, you all know me, I'm here representing Project Rising Tide. I am going to comment about the Downtown Development Authority discussion. I gotta say that one of the goals of Rising Tide is kind of working with the communities that aren't participating to move the work forward and try to make sure that the communities take advantage of the recommendations and the work that, you know, we're trying to do. I am here to express that I'm really worried about the relationship here in Manassas. I feel that the relationship between the city and the DDA are one of the core relationships to maintain to make sure, you know, my time here is worth something and that we carry it on moving forward. And I feel that there is, and I've seen it, that there is a big disconnect in between the understanding, expectations, communications, that I would be happy to continue to be helpful to make those work better. We, I'm just completing my interim report as part of Project Rising Tide and I can tell you that I'm very worried on the sustainability of the recommendations if we don't generally try to work together to move things forward. So, that's pretty much my comment. I, I hope that tonight we take this evening as an opportunity to just communicate clearly among each other and, you know, get it out there. If there's questions, doubts, this last two weeks I've been slammed with all kinds of questions from different directions. And I try to be a resource for everyone, but I also like to be transparent and just be helpful. And I feel that the best way to be helpful is to be clear. And if we don't try to move beyond the personal stuff and try to get the work done, I don't think we're going to achieve stuff together. So, that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? What? Is there somebody else? Okay. Seeing none, discussion on golf carts.
Yes, I was contacted by a citizen that was interested in addressing council about allowing golf carts in the city. He's provided you with some reference material as well as a cover letter. I believe he's in the audience tonight and just interested in hearing what council's position is.
Well, I'll start it. I don't have a problem with golf carts. I've worked in the community that had golf carts. In the community, we have motorcycles, we have mopeds, we have bicycles. We have all of those types of things running around. The state of Michigan does allow it. There is a provision in the state code to allow that to happen. I contacted Luddington, I had a long conversation with them, they have about a hundred and sixty, I believe, registered. They've had no problems whatsoever. They were on a year trial period. That has since passed and they've made it permanent. Anybody else have any comments?
Well, a couple of years ago, there was a gentleman here that was building the things. And you could take your golf cart, do many, put everything on to make it roadworthy. So, that's been going on for a long time.
Would there be certain, like if you had a moped, I know you have to be fourteen and you have to operate it. Certain lights.
Sixteen. Yeah, sixteen.
You have to be, to operate a, on a city street or, the state law requires that you're sixteen and have a driver's license.
For a moped?
No, for a golf cart.
Golf cart.
Sixteen.
State law requires it.
Yeah. Right here.
Do they have to be insured?
I thought it was something that we were going to talk about eighteen.
The question was being insured. I did contact my insurance agency, I don't know about others. But I have State Farm, not State Farm, I have, I won't mention my insurance company. I, my insurance company says it's automatic. I'm automatically covered for liability. So, I don't know how other insurance companies work.
I didn't see a reference in, that it had to be insured.
It does not have to be.
I think it would, you know, if you're going to have one and operate it, it would be a good idea to make sure you have some kind of coverage. But it's not mandated by state law that I'm aware of.
My concern is to have, when you get into accidents, what happens? Like if you get, you know, if you hit a deer or if you hit another golf cart or another vehicle, it's a safety too. I'm kind of wondering what Chief Cozel thinks about the whole thing.
I think, and I talked with Chief Barnett down in Luddington, I think the ordinance that they adopted to allow it, I think they had as eighteen as a overriding age. As far as what they had, and I asked him a lot of questions, I was, I was concerned about youth, utilizing on the road, doing things, you know, when they're over visiting grandma and grandpa. They don't encounter that. They haven't had any incidents and this has been two years. I'm not saying it can't happen. They have trackability on it, they have every single unit get registered with the police department. It's a free sticker so that it's accounted for within the police department in case it's left somewhere, we can account for who we have to go track down. I think it sometimes can be a benefit, especially if you're thinking sustainability or green, you know, maybe with electric golf carts and not utilizing fuel. I have some concerns a little bit, but he said he didn't have concerns down there, is about parking and taking up parking spaces and our limited parking that we have along River Street. However, he said they didn't have those issues down there. There is a limited amount of time you can use it during the daytime. They have, can't be past dark, I think it's actually a time period and there is like an hour before. So, we can put our own limitations within our own city ordinance to govern that. If there is accidents, of course, or is, is incidents, we'll respond as usual. They can't, I think, exceed thirty-five or twenty-five miles an hour, I mean, there's all kinds of limitations. And I don't think there's a lot of areas within the city of Manassas where there's a lot of line spots where we might have issues. They still have to abide by our road and driving laws and can't go through stop signs, I mean, you still have to obey the laws like you do on a pedal bike, so.
I have a couple of questions. Can we make the age limit eighteen?
Certainly, I believe Luddington has that.
And not according to?
They do not?
Their ordinance says sixteen.
Okay.
They're sixteen, yeah.
I think personally, it says there in the state law that the local authorities have to enact. I do not know if I'd be a question for George if we could
Yeah.
make the age eighteen. But he's not had any issues with youth down in Luddington. They don't have to have turn signals? They don't have to be, as Mr. Grabowski said, road ready, they can just be a normal electric golf cart.
So, it doesn't have, have to have lights or anything like that?
They can't operate a half hour before sunset to a half hour after sunset.
Yeah.
On the state law. They, they cannot exceed fifteen miles per hour. And they can't operate any streets, the speed limit's thirty miles an hour or more.
Well, they can't be on Parkdale Thirty-One?
Right.
You have to be on our local.
They can't, they can't ride on any truck, trunk lines. They can cross those streets. But they can't ride on those streets.
They can't go on the sidewalks, there's, there's a number of restrictions.
They can't, yeah, it's just, it's in the state law.
Yeah.
The thing that, that leaves us an option here is that, do we want to register? And we can't charge for that, for registering those. And I think it's a good idea to have them registered. They put a little sticker on the back with a number and that number corresponds with the name of the person that owns it. So, if there is an issue and somebody gets that number, it's kind of like a license plate, you know who to contact and who to deal with. You're not looking for the brown golf cart, probably fifty brown ones, I don't know. I think it's a good idea and we need, I don't know what that would cost to have those stickers made up, but we can't charge for it, so.
No, I, I can't believe that they're going to be that costly. And I agree that it does provide another level of accountability.
I would suggest if we do, that we, you know, have that as a portion of it. And I believe we can just take it out of the DPW budget if so.
Yeah.
I agree.
He must be napping, he didn't hear?
I don't think I really have any issues with the golf carts at all. I mean, my parents lived in Arizona for thirty-two years and every community they lived in, there were golf carts every place. And it seemed to be a very practical method of transportation in those communities. I, I think I, I think I'm a little bit worried about the age. So, I think I would, my personal opinion, I would be leaning more toward a higher age limit than sixteen. But but the other thing that I would be, that I would like to see happen is if we, we do pass this and allow it in the city, I would like a lot of communication about. I'm sure there are some golf carts that really aren't legal. There should be some real strict guidelines on, you know, what constitutes a legal golf cart that we're talking about. Because I don't want to see any homemade type golf carts that don't have all the right things on them.
I think that if, another recommendation I would have is if we do pass this and they come in for their sticker, we can hand them, this is the law. This is what you have to follow, you know, to, once you place that sticker on that vehicle, so. Be another education piece, I think, on top of what you're.
Could we ask everybody who's getting one of the stickers to show us the hand signals you're supposed to use? This is a quick refresher.
I don't even know if I remember all the hand signals, so.
Council wishes, the staff can work with the city attorney to, to draft an ordinance for your review and consideration at a future meeting. And also discuss the, if Mayor Protem wishes we can discuss changing or having an age restriction of eighteen versus sixteen.
My, my thought process on the age is that if you're old enough to get a license and drive a car, you ought to be able to drive a golf cart. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Well, we can certainly come up with a, a draft and present it for council and you can discuss it and make changes if and as necessary.
Can we ask the people who are there, who are here from Harbor Village? Have they thought about the age limit and what their ideas are?
They're in the audience, if they want, it's council's prerogative if you want to ask them to address it.
Really, I think that's up to you. I think sixteen, if you get the driver's license, I think you should be able to handle a golf cart. That would be a good experience. I know overall, this is it, we have older community and we have a lot of people that have trouble getting around. And I think we would really appreciate it. I know my life, you know, walk a block or two, but I guarantee you, if I get close to a store, it's going to be an ass day. If I'm on a golf cart, it should be a.
Okay.
But I think, really, it's up to you as a city agent.
What I've noted, when I read the Luddington ordinance, they pretty much mirror the state law. Pretty much word for word. A couple of, they put something in there about several fractions. Other than that, they, it's pretty much word for word state law. Anything else? Do you have enough direction, Mr. Taylor?
I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Discussion on a potential for another development, Housing Commission development and by Hollander Construction.
Council members, good evening and thank you for this opportunity. My name's Jason Muniz, I'm Vice President of Hollander Development Corporation. Joined today with, by Joe Hollander from our company and Lindsay McIntyre from the City of Manassas Public Housing Commission. And I wanted to introduce a project we are working on here in the city. I wanted to do that by, by talking about a program called RAD and I will explain shortly what that is. It is the Department of Housing and Urban Development Program that arose out of a longstanding need in, in the country to address some, some systemic issues with public housing. Namely, that they are historically underfunded in terms of anything other than perhaps direct operating costs. So, so any capital needs or improvements that, that property has as it age often are unfunded and left unaddressed until an only plausible solution is condemnation and loss of affordable housing in the community. In an attempt to, to address that problem, HUD has created this program called Rental Assistance Demonstration, or RAD, which allows for the conversion of, of the subsidy that HUD gives to the Public Housing Authority, in this case, the City of Manassas Housing Commission. It allows for a unit, for a unit conversion of that subsidy to a Section Eight contract, which would transfer to private ownership to be combined with, with private investment to redevelop that site and to continue to steward it into the future so that those capital improvement needs are met. And so that there's, is a private investor who has a vested interest in ensuring that the future vitality of such a project exists for generations to come. So, that program exists, however, it is a competitive program. There's, there's again, only so much availability to go around within, within the HUD community to the public housing commissions to, to redevelop their, their portfolio of housing. So, the City of Manassas Housing Commission identified this program, I believe, you know, a number of years ago, began their application process to, with HUD to go down this corridor to, to seek the subsidy. They were approved for a commitment to convert their, their subsidy to a private Section Eight subsidy. And at that time, they contracted with a third party consultant to help them with this RAD process who helped draft a, a RFQ or request for qualified developers to seek a developer to shepherd through the, the conversion process of identifying the potential for redevelopment and, and moving that process forward. Through that process, Hollander Development entered into the RFQ competition. We were selected as the developer and we are working toward finalizing our, our development agreement with the Housing Commission presently. Part of the review of the Housing Commission here on their existing portfolio and on this process was that they identified that the existing portfolio's needs were such that the logical redevelopment for their, their first phase of their housing, which is forty-eight units, which is our, the scattered sites that exist currently on Vine Street, Holly Street and, and the surrounding area, was that the logical course of action would be that a new site would be identified, multifamily development would be constructed to maximize efficiencies and economies of scale within the community. And that the residents would be relocated to that site once it was developed. So, that led us to, toward looking to identify such a site that, that would be suitable. And that's when we discovered the Olson Lumber site on Harrison, which is on the projector and I believe everyone has a copy of the site plan that we have for it. The current site plan envisions forty-eight units, that's, that's what our architects came up with. That is a one-for-one conversion of, of the existing Phase One portfolio. We are optimistic that we will be able to reconfigure the site a bit and perhaps acquire some additional land there to allow for up to twelve additional units for a total of sixty. We are planning to use the Longcom Housing Tax Credit as a source of equity on this, so our site selection is, is critical to, to the overall vision of this project. And we have started with the planning commission to ask for street vacation on Van Buren and Jefferson there. And we are working with Department of Public Works to ensure that water availability is, is available to such a site. I believe a main would need to be large, enlarged to, to put it in. And now we are here today to ask the city, you know, to, to start the conversation to work in toward a payment in lieu of taxes for the affordable housing portion. And that is essentially the synopsis for, for the program. I don't know if Lindsay or Joe have any comments on, on that part.
Any questions? I have a question. I don't see the central services fee escalator in this. Is there a reason for that?
Joe, would you like to talk about the?
Sure. The short answer is I forgot to put it in.
Okay.
The plan is, I mean, it would, it would have the same three percent increase each year that we, we had for the Hillcrest project.
Okay, so this essentially matches everything that we're getting in the Hillcrest project.
It actually is a little bit more. This, this is a starting point. We are not very far along with our costing at this point. We know what our subsidy stream is going to be, we know what our income is going to be. We're projecting expenses based upon the Housing Commission's history with the scattered site projects. But we don't, we're using construction numbers that have not been tested. They're basically taken from Hillcrest, but Hillcrest has different designed buildings and everything. So, what we're showing you here is a for instance, okay? So, when we have forty-eight units, and I think the original submission to you was for fifty units, we're looking at the city share of about fifteen thousand eight hundred. That might be, wind up being fourteen thousand, it might wind up being a little bit more than fifteen eight. When we actually submit our formal request for the payment in lieu of taxes, we'll give you the exact numbers and we, we should have that by, within the next couple of weeks. But we wanted to start the conversation now to let you know it was coming. Give you an idea of what's happening with the Housing Commission and where, you know, the background of this program. And to let you know the site that we think would be an excellent site for the project. And for example, on the forty-eight units, that fifteen eight figure will definitely go up if we're able to hit sixty units with this. So, and that's going to go up by fifteen, twenty percent maybe. But at least you know our methodology. Saying we didn't, these are the two thousand eighteen millages, not the two thousand nineteen, to the extent that they've changed, so. There'll be changes.
Well, my question would be what happens to the property that's being vacated on Vine and Twelfth Street?
That property is held in trust by the Housing Commission. And so it will be their decision what to do with it. We've had discussions, very, very, you know, preliminary discussions, for instance kind of discussions. But I don't believe that they've given a lot of thought to it at this point. They're waiting to see how this thing moves along. It would be an excellent site for some single-family homes. We've talked about that. And single-family homes that would be priced for the market here. And so we're investigating modular, we're even talking about the possibility of manufactured housing. It's the kind of thing we would discuss with the city as well. It's not our decision, but we've, we've indicated we'd be interested in, in working with the commission if that's their pleasure. Sorry to be vague, but we're at that, you know, we just got started on this basically. We have an October first deadline. So, that's why we're before you tonight, because we've got a very short period of time to get all this put together and time to meet that deadline, mission's deadline. And so we wanted to start the conversation as soon as we had some sense of where we were going with it.
I've gotten limited feedback because there isn't a lot of information that's been released to the public for them to wrap their arms around this. But it hasn't been positive. And there's been a little bit of skeptical, you know, they're a little bit skeptical and they're worried about property values in that area. So, I think the more information we can get out there and what this is going to look like so that they have a better understanding of it.
Right.
And allow public input by having some, you know, either work sessions or in our agenda, making sure that we make room for people who want to, want to speak about this project. And if they have any misconceptions about it, it's cleared up early rather than later.
We have to go through rezoning PUD procedure. And having been through that process many times in communities over the years, we understand that there might be some concern. And we're prepared to address it, but it would be premature tonight to even look at that. The, I, I think the location that we've chosen, took that into consideration. We think we can improve the neighborhood by doing this. Studies have shown that housing like this does not depreciate values and in most cases, it increases values. We're not making that claim here, but we believe that kind of amenities we're providing, the quality of the housing that's being built, what we're replacing, all of that is positive. And yes, some neighbors are going to be concerned, we understand that. And we're certainly willing to meet with them on a one-on-one basis and any other basis that they choose. We've always done that and work with them through this process. But this is, this is a great site for what we're trying to do. It's in a residential area, it would be a lousy site if it was anywhere else. And we think that from the quality standpoint, we can, we can make a very positive statement for the north side of the city by putting us in this location.
One thing I am excited about is having more children in the area. So, I, I think the families that occupy these have children and that would be a real plus, I think.
And one of the things Jason didn't mention is, is this is a one-for-one replacement for what the scattered site has. So, that means that the scattered site, I think, has a number of four-bedroom units. We're replacing those one-for-one. All right, so the same thing with three-bedroom units. So, we're, we're concentrating on meeting existing need as represented by existing tendencies. We're not speculating about it, we're actually trying to replicate that, that, that particular housing choice. And the site is designed to be child-friendly. We've already talked to the Transportation Department about putting a bus shelter on the site so that they drive right through and pick up the kids in a safe location. We've got a large playground designed for the area, we've got a garden area for the residents, something that they've expressed us. We've already had one meeting with the residents and taken their feedback and sort of incorporated into these preliminary design ideas.
Well, that's good to hear. I'm glad you've had those meetings with the, the residents that might be moving over.
Right, and there'll be several more as well.
Yes, Mr. McCullough, you have something?
Yeah, I'd like to just mention a couple of things from the public works perspective. We've had a couple of internal meetings and we've had a meeting with the Housing Commission and Development Team. And one of the things that's unique about this site that creates a potential opportunity for the city is we've got extremely undersized water mains on both Jackson, Van Buren, and there's none, it's non-existent on Jefferson Street. So, if you look in our capital improvement program and in our transportation improvement program, we have close to a million dollars of street upgrades and water main upgrades planned for the year two thousand twenty-one. If this project is built, and it's built similar to that configuration, they will extend some water main within the site and then have also programmed some money to do improvements off-site because their project will likely be six to twelve months ahead of what we had planned and what, when the funds would be available for us. So, some of the infrastructure improvements that we had planned in, in our, our plan, or planning for will be improved by the developer. And then when we come back in the following year in two thousand twenty-one to complete the work, that likely will save, could be two hu, two to three hundred thousand dollars of both street money and combined with water and sewer money. Today, we started meeting with the engineers and talking about where that money could flow to the next project and be added on to, to both the street and the, the capital improvement program and the utilities. So, even though we're, we may not see tremendous new revenue to the water and sewer fund because of, it's a one-for-one replacement, there would be some substantial infrastructure improvements that, that would benefit us and would allow us to move the money on to the next project.
We're still going to have cost, city cost to upgrade that water there, right?
Well, if they, preliminary, what they've talked about is upgrading or installing a water main that goes through that project from Harrison Street to the north and either going east or west along Jackson Street. Just the rough numbers, we haven't even talked to the developer about this today. But when we looked at rough numbers today, it looks like for them, the most cost-effective would be to go out to Washington Street. We also have more water on Washington Street, so that would create a very good loop and it would, would meet all their needs. The city project would have already put a water main on Jackson Street on that stretch for that three hundred feet. But we also would have put a main in between Van Buren and Jackson. And if that's covered by the development cost, then those costs could be moved to a different project that the city plans in the future.
Would that help? Quincy?
Potentially. However, the money that we're going to use to fund the water main improvements would be through a drinking water revolving. would be through a drinking water revolving fund loan. And our application for that is due, the next one is due May of two thousand twenty. Part of the Quincy Street, Quincy Street project already has water main money that we programmed into that dwarf application or the DWRF application. So this would free up street money, but we've already got the street money for Quincy Street programmed. So it likely would free up water main work someplace else in the city. And then we would have to follow that with additional road funding to add another project. So it probably doesn't advance that, but it advances a project behind that forward.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, discussion on Downtown Development Authority Board, City Manager, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, this was added to the council's work session, that council's direction, so I'll defer to council as to what discussions they want to take place.
Well, I think Lisette spoke some good words about the fact that there's a discord or between the city and the DDA. And I think part of it has started with Roger advising them on March thirteenth that there was an interest in changing the bylaws to allow the city manager to sit on the board. And I also spoke up during public comments about that as well. So that hasn't gone as smoothly as we would have liked. And, and I would love to see how we can smooth that out, and I'm hoping that that will get smoothed out. So that's my input for right now.
Well, my disappointment came at the meeting when Mr. Taylor was not allowed to vote. Pretty much didn't have, was told he couldn't have anything, pretty much anything to do with the meeting. I didn't understand that, I know the state law supersedes even our city ordinances. And I didn't, couldn't understand why he was not allowed to sit on that board and vote. I thought he was very mistreated. And then you can't, I can't believe that you didn't know because the chair talked about having a discussion. I don't know when that discussion took place, but evidently what I heard her say was there was a discussion about that very, that very issue, and that she had support. Now, I don't know where that support came from or how it came about. I would hope, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but I hope there wasn't meetings outside of the public viewing. I would hope that there wasn't people deliberating to the point of a conclusion on that issue. Hopefully, that issue has been resolved, we've had attorney's opinions, that should have never happened. Some of my other frustrations is that the lack of being able to move forward in a timely manner. And that was really, it really was slammed home to me the, the day that we met with the person that was gonna help the DDA with the TEF committee, with the new TEF plan. He came in, he listened for a few minutes, and this is what he said. He said, "I feel like this is Groundhog Day. You're still dealing with the same issues you dealt with back when I helped with the first plan." So the way I was feeling and the way I was thinking kind of, that kind of reinforced it. I don't understand why it takes so long, I don't understand why we deliberate over and over again. I, I believe that it's a roadblock, when you do that, it's a roadblock for the, the development, the DDA district. I don't believe we're getting value for our tax dollars when that happens, not only in the DDA district, but in the taxpayer as a whole. There are counties, the county gives up money, different tax, taxing jurisdictions give up money. For this DDA to be moving forward in a timely manner, I don't see that happening. I'm really questioning what value we receive for the money being spent. I've not made any decision yet, I'm still evaluating those things, I'm trying very hard to understand. As far as working together and working closely or closer together, I think we need to do that. I think maybe an idea might be to have a committee of the DDA and council with Mr. Taylor present to sit down and talk about issues prior to them getting to the board, I don't know. But in order for it to be functional, in order for us to work together and move in a positive direction, we need to figure this out. How are we gonna do that? I'm wide open for suggestions.
One thing that I have, I know when we had worked with the AES, when we had work sessions, we actually sat at a table. I think with us being up here and all the DDA members out there, it's not giving us a good communication level. And I think that a lot of the stuff that's happened in the past, we need to get over. One thing to work as a team is take, leave all this drama out, and we're just adding to drama. So we're all here to make the city better, and I think we just need to move forward. I know there hasn't been a lot of drama, but it's not helping, but just keep bringing it up. We do need to work through it and see how things can get better. But that would be my suggestion, if we wanna work and communicate better, we need to sit at the same level with the DDA.
Well, the other thing that I keep hearing is, and I'm just gonna say this, that I keep hearing, well, you know, we're volunteers, we have businesses. And then I'm, I'm reading emails that say that same thing. Being on the DDA board is a big commitment. It does take a lot of time, and it does, there's a lot of things, a lot of moving parts. And I would just suggest that if you don't have the time to do, to make that commitment, then maybe you ought to start rethinking about whether I should be there or not, because it is a very important position. There's a lot of money being spent, there's a lot of decisions that are made that directly reflect the future of man and state. I just feel it's important that the time be spent.
Mayor?
Sure.
Can I address?
Absolutely.
Hey. I'm going to address the first issue that you brought up.
State your name and address.
TF Taxiades, property owner on eighty Washington Street and eighty-six Washington Street. I want to address the first issue, which is the treatment of the DDA, of the city manager at the meeting of, the last meeting of the DDA three, four weeks ago. You receive, as we all did, an email from the chair, the DDA board chair, Rachel Brooks, that outlined how we perceived the change in membership in the DDA board from the mayor to the city manager. I was one of the two individuals, in addition to the chair, that I believe that in the absence of any written direction from council and in the absence of any legal opinion as to the eligibility of the city manager to be a voting member, I looked at the bylaws because I believe it's my responsibility, you appointed me to the DDA board, and it's the bylaws as they stand that I have to go by. We did not ignore the manager. As a matter of fact, when the manager said that he disagreed and that he wanted his votes to be, to count, I said that based on the fact that the bylaws have not changed and without having direction from council or legal opinion that the ordinance supersedes the bylaws and I have to ignore the bylaws, I told the city manager that I cannot record the vote, but I will make a note in the minutes, as a secretary, by the way, that I will make a note in the minutes that the manager voted, and when you see the minutes, that's reflected after every item that we voted on. Head council provided us with some written direction that, yes, you can ignore the bylaws, the DDA bylaws, and that the ordinance supersedes the bylaws, that would be a different story. You said that we had meetings beforehand. I did not, and I don't believe anybody else-
First of all, I didn't say that, I said I would hope that didn't happen.
You did not. About five minutes before the meeting, that's the first time I've heard about it. And the next thing I saw, Thad, the, the manager sat on with the board and you sat in the audience. So that's what transpired, and that is the reason for the approach that at least I took. And I agree with the approach that the chair did. Now, since the time and with both legal opinion that the chair update, her personal, from her personal attorney, as well as consultation with my personal attorney, because I wanna make sure that I didn't break any laws, there are some things we can do at tomorrow's meeting, DDA meeting, to deal with the issue of the voting by the city manager. And I, that's subject to approval by the board. And I don't know what's the proper legal word, but put aside the DDA bylaws until they're changed and until you ratify them, approve them so that we can continue with the business of the DDA with the manager being, being able to vote. But I take strong position on the fact that, at least when I said that I cannot record the, the city manager's vote, it was because the bylaws, the DDA bylaws at that time had not changed. I do not disagree with you and others who said that you brought that up, the need to change the bylaws to the board a number of times. I do not disagree with that. And I understand that tomorrow, we're going to be dealing with some of those changes. But at the time that this happened, without proper, without prior and written notice, I had no choice but take the position that I did, just to clarify my position. And I reviewed the tapes of the meeting several times to make sure that I had not misspoken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, do you have anything?
So, so we can move forward, the bylaws have not changed.
No, we, we started talking to the DDA, I mean Roger did, on March thirteenth, March thirteenth, and we're still at this stage.
So what do we have to do to get-
They're on the, they're on the agenda for the DDA tomorrow, to be approved by the DDA board, and then they'll come to council the next meeting, to be approved by us, and then they take effect.
So Thad still cannot vote on tomorrow's meeting?
What I understand is they're, they're, at tomorrow's board meeting, they're gonna consider suspending their bylaws until they're been formally approved?
Is that gonna be the first thing, so if you would-
I don't think that's-
Then after that?
I don't know where it appears on the agenda, I don't know.
Cause if we can get that on-
It's, it's first time.
Okay, so if you guys table that bylaws, then he can vote the rest of the meeting.
I'm not sure that it is in the agenda, but we can introduce it and we can add it to the agenda if it is the first time.
Barry wants to-
Oh, hi Barry, yeah, sorry. Please state your name and address.
Barry Lind, five thirty-two Fourth Street, and currently Vice Chair on the DDA board. And our chair couldn't be here tonight, so. Now, one of, and this was kind of brought up before, it's kind of a, you're sitting there, we're sitting in the audience. And because this isn't a joint meeting, the DDA isn't here in board form. We're all here individually as individual people speaking. So none of us can speak for the board because this is not a public DDA meeting in any sense. So I'm speaking for myself here, and T was speaking for himself, and, you know, we're all here listening, but, you know, we're not, you're hearing individual opinions. So I wanted to start off with saying that. The second thing I wanted to talk about is this timeline. So March, at our March meeting, the mayor indicated, and I don't know when during the meeting it was, but his intention to bring before council changes to the ordinance reflecting representation on the DDA board. At that point, again, the mayor is speaking as an individual, not for council, because the council hadn't taken action to that. That action took place in April and was ratified, I believe, probably in the second meeting of April. We then, really then, at that point, in our May meeting is the first time where we've been given direction by council of your intentions, intentional changes. At that meeting, we appointed a committee to, to go through our bylaws and ma, make a recommendation for those necessary changes. Unfortunately, sometime in, the optics of this looked bad, it wasn't intentional, but that committee comprised of myself and two other board members failed to meet during that month. We basically left that meeting and kind of forgot about it. And because our interim director was on the way out and our new director wasn't yet in, there was really no staff person to remind us, oh, have you done your work as a committee and gone through the bylaws with recommendations for our June meeting? So we get to our June meeting and, oh, light comes on, oop, we screwed up, and it was a screw-up. So we now are in June meeting, T kind of gave you the timeline of what happened there. So we now do have on our agenda for tomorrow's meeting the updates to the bylaws that myself and the rest of the committee have basically gone through and recommended to the board. Now, as it relates to the format of tomorrow's meeting, and again, I'm speaking personally, I am going to go into that meeting with the following recommendation for discussion when it comes to the agenda, that we, in that meeting, only take action on the bylaws and we table everything else on the agenda for the August meeting. So that the only thing that we're voting on is the bylaw change, and that then when we do the rest of the meeting, and this is an important meeting because it is our organizational meeting where we are choosing, collecting new officers. And I think it would do a disservice if we tried to do that without the city manager's participation in a for, in a format that everyone agrees to is fair and equitable. So that's why I'm gonna be recommending that we only take action on the bylaws at the meeting and table everything else till the following meeting, after which you would have approved the bylaws, and all of this can be behind us and we can move forward. Last thing I wanna say is we have an issue of trust between city staff and DDA board members. How we've gotten to this point, and this goes back years, it predates our current city manager. There's always been a rocky relationship, but we locked- manager, there's always been a rocky relationship, but we lack trust. The rumors and the, the things I hear about, you know, on probably both sides are like, really, we're at this point? I don't know how we get beyond that, other than just put it behind us and just move forward. But we've got to rebuild this la, this relationship of trust for us to constructively do all of our jobs. Those are the things I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
I have a couple of comments I'd like to make after, just, just to, just as a refresher, we had a work session March twelfth, and it was the consensus of the council members present, and I think we were all present at that time, that we move in the direction of changing our ordinance to, to change mayor to city manager to sit on the DDA board. The following day was the DDA ma, meeting, and Roger was referring to that, so I, he wasn't really speaking as an individual, because it was a result of our work session to, to move forward with that. And I also made it plain at the end of the meeting, in the two minutes allowed for public comment, because the meeting, council member beaten commented on last night's work session, council recommended to amend the DDA bylaws to enable the city manager to sit on the DDA board. So, it's in your minutes. So, I think the frustration, and I'm speaking personally, is the fact that it takes so long to get something accomplished as something that was important to us about changing that seat. So, here we are, it's July, and we're still talking about it at this point, and hopefully it'll get smoothed over tomorrow, but that's why it's on the agenda tonight.
So I think with, I do, I feel bad for Caitlin, having to come on to have to deal with all this, but if, with Caitlin coming on and knowing what's been happening and the frustrations and the lack of trust, that maybe she can help with that and try to get things moving along, and so I'm hopeful that this stuff can be resolved.
Sure, sure, go ahead.
All right, Nicole Knapp, four oh one Fourth Street. I have been to DDA meetings, I've been to city council meetings, I've talked to you guys about trash, about blight, and you all, both boards, give the same answers. And as a downtown building and business owner, I think that you equally point fingers. So the Riverwalk looks like garbage, and it is a resource that we should be proud of, right? There has been so many visitors in town this weekend, and they have to go and they have to use that. There's like algae down by the beach on it, there's trash flowing, we're still talking about trash, city's responsibility, DDA's responsibility, still talking about trash. I have been complaining in September for trash to this board and the DDA board for two years, and we still have, we have a trash committee, but we have no trash resolution. So, it is really hard to, like, you guys both point fingers at each other and nobody, I called the city office to complain about the Riverwalk, and you know the answer that I got? That's not my job, talk to the DDA, direct words from them. And I'm like, well, that's funny, because the DDA makes a payment to the city for the Riverwalk. And like, it's just, it's not my, it's like playing ball, not mine, not mine, not mine, but it's, we all need to, we all live here, we owe it to the community members, everybody, to, to do better and to have more accountability. That means cleaning up the trash, that means a nice Riverwalk that we all built with taxpayer dollars, that doesn't, there's trash on it, there's literally bushes and there's weeds, like, people joke about it, that there's weeds in flower boxes, but we're all okay with that. And we're okay with on Sunday evening that there's heaps of trash on River Street. No one else has to live like that, except in the city. And I just think it is ridiculous, that you got, that this board blames this board and the DDA blames that, and no one gets anywhere. So I don't think it's just not the DDA that gets where, I don't think city council is doing the best to help the DDA get there and vice versa. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goodman. It should be Mrs. Goodman, not Ms. Goodman.
I apologize, I came from my exercise class and I didn't change, but Karen Goodman, county commissioner for the sixth district, which includes the city and downtown. I am also a DDA board member, and I appreciate Barry's comments about we are each here speaking independently, not as DDA members. I'm here to represent DDA, but primarily I'm here as a county commissioner, to discuss with you my concerns. As you know, the county does not give as much money as everybody else, but we do have some skin in the game. We do have about a quarter of the budget that we supply finances to. And I have been concerned, and that's why I pushed to get on the, the DDA, I have been concerned about, you know, our finances, what we're paying for and what the outcomes were, this is the whole discussion back when the AES was dissolving and all that stuff. So we're looking for answers on where is our money being effectively used. I have been frustrated with the DDA meetings, everybody knows that, I think I don't hide that very well at many occasions. I have also been frustrated with some responses within the city meetings when we've sat down for TIF discussions and talked about, you know, responsibilities such as who's, who's cleaning up the Riverwalk and who's going to take care of that. And we do pay a price for it, but do we get what we get, what we should get? You know, that's another question. If I went down with the checklist and according to my standards, no. But maybe according to the standards of the persons or the organization that we're purchasing it from, it may be okay. I don't know, we have to define these things. Long story short, I hear you. I hear you saying, what can we do? I really don't care about what happened in the past, I really don't have any grudges or personal, oh, I do have personal opinions, everybody knows that, but I, I, I just want to get this better as well. I hear you very clearly say, what can we do? Starting today, what can we do? So, first, I wanted to find that city council, you're in charge of the DDA, you oversee it, correct? It is your responsibility, we are part of the city, and we are part of this, we are a branch of this organization, correct?
That is correct, is the way, that's I, the way I see it, I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn. Thad, would you like to make a comment?
That's correct. That's correct.
So, I, I, I think tomorrow we're just going to have to reiterate that, you know, whether you like it or not, we do answer to you. So I make, I, I know that, that very clear, I'm also a servant, I understand how those, you know, chains of responsibility go. So, we have to please you in order to get this right. We have responsibility to all the members down on River Street and everybody in the DDA district. We have responsibilities to the county for getting things right too and spending money appropriately. So there's a lot of balls that we're juggling. But again, I want to go back to, we need to get this right and we need to resolve it now. Are we going to build trust? You know, I, I, I can take you out and we can do, you know, fifteen different trust games if you want, I don't care, but it's not going to make, I don't think it's going to make a difference, because everybody has their opinions. I just want to keep coming back to, what's the focus? You're the boss, we're the workers, we have a responsibility to you, the city, we have a responsibility to the people in the DDA, and we just need to work on that.
Let me interrupt you just for a second. So what I, I think I hear you saying is, you feel the DDA needs stronger direction from council, and which way they should go?
Um, I think that council sometime has backed off respectively, and I appreciate that. I, I feel personally that the DDA has struggled and has been trying to find its footing for the last maybe year. We've gone through some big transition, we, you know, it appears to me that there was a lot of confusion thrust upon the previous administrator there. So, it, it was really fragmented. They did a lot of great things and were able to do a lot of successful things, even though they were struggling, I think, that's my opinion. So, I have to give credit where credit is due to the group, even though it feels like a lot of things aren't getting done, and I'm right with you, I'm kind of like, hey, if we make a plan today, let's get it done by tomorrow. You know, I'm one of those people that prefers things move, move quickly, even the way I talk. But the, the bottom line is that, you know, that the DDA itself is working out relationships. I, I really think so. We have, we have some dynamic new number, members, I think, you know, that are going to bring, what I keep saying is fresh perspectives, new ideas. We do have a tendency to fall into a rut. I don't think you have to dictate to us, but, you know, I appreciate that you're in the audience, you know, it doesn't bother me any, I don't have a problem with that bad, I think that's a better way to have a relationship with the city, I think it's made sense. I just am here to tell you, I'm ready to let it go forward and just get all this behind us, and I, I, I would like us to be a little more effective, and I think that's probably what I'll be saying tomorrow too.
And I, I think what I'm hearing is, and my feeling is, how do we, how do we put this behind us, and how do we work as a team moving forward to benefit this community? That, that's the question, that's the question that's been asked in many different ways by many different people. We need to resolve that, and we need to do it soon. You have a new TIF plan coming up, things need to be done, and need to be done rather fast, so.
Mayor, I think we have a lot of great things on the horizon. You know, we've got a great candidate who's now our, you know, our director, I think we have some, some very talented people who are in our, our board, who can really, I mean, they kind of showed that when everything, when the bottom fell out, everybody jumped in and kind of took pieces of it. Unfortunately, during that time, as you're trying to take over and really be responsible for this stuff, you have a tendency to get into a micromanagement mode, you know, because you're trying to save something, so it's hard to back off that after you've been so involved. So I think that's where the, the board, in my opinion, has been struggling, is about moving back from that and allowing others to take control. The other piece on that, I think, is that with this new leadership, I think we have more direction, we'll be able to, I, I think the TIF plan looks good, lots of great stuff that we can do, we just have to keep pushing forward and just, the rumors, I, I hear them, you know, and I don't, I don't, I, well, you know how it is, you, you talk to a lot of different people, and, and, and the rumors that come from, city council said this, city council said that, Thad said this, Thad said that, you know, and I'm sure you hear it from us, the things that, you know, we all know, I'm sorry, but this, you know, small town, we all love to gossip, I guess, and maybe we should just, if you hear something, please call, I don't mind, give me a call, I, you know, right, Mayor, I will, I will-
Drive by my house at least once a day.
At least a couple of times I'm spying on you. But you know, it's like, I, I have no problem asking those questions, like, did you really say that? And it's, and it, it ends up being what people hear, and then what they take out of here can be two completely different things. I don't, I really don't believe that you wish us ill will, I don't think you want to close us down and eradicate us, I think you want us to be successful, and we want to be successful.
Well, I don't want, I don't want to be misunderstood here.
Yeah, I am.
I, I, I'm not against the DDA.
Yeah.
But if it does not start to function properly, then I start to question the value that we're receiving for the tax dollar. We need to figure out how we can move forward in a positive way, because in that situation, we all win.
Yep.
This situation, only part, part of it's being successful. There are successes.
Yeah.
I mean, there are things that are successful, but not as much as could be. I mean, there's so much potential out there that we're not capitalizing on, we've got to figure out how to work together to get it done.
Yeah.
I don't have answers for that, I guess.
I, I think we can only go forward, you know, I'm just going to keep saying, I hear you, I, I take it seriously, I will take that to our board too, I think the other board members, they hear you. We just have to work out within ourselves about our trust issues. I have no answer for that.
I have no problem trusting you, I, in fact, I said at the council meeting when you hired Caitlin. I said, "I trust your decision."
Mm-hmm.
I have no problem with that. So, I, okay.
Yeah, it, it just maybe, it, it's those outside environmental things or people with, you know, maybe vicious tongues that, you know, just are in trouble, and we've just got to all let it go and just move on, get ourselves going so that we have quick resolutions. You know, I, again, I, I have my frustrations that we can't make decisions on a timely basis, you know, so we'll, we'll work on that, that's, I, I can only tell you, I hear you, and I'll do my part, and I really know there are many people on this board that would be willing to do the same thing.
Thank you very much.
I have a suggestion for the DDA, and, and tomorrow is an opportunity for you guys to think about changing the leadership of your board chair, vice chair, and secretary and treasurer. So, I think you just need to think about the qualities that you want in those people, and maybe you have people on your board who would be willing to serve in those positions. It might, you know, change is sometimes hard to accept, but sometimes it can bring good things, and maybe that would help smooth out some of the issues by just changing and thinking about it. Just a suggestion, most of you are here, so it's an opportunity.
So I have to say this, as I'm listening and sitting here, I kind of feel like this is, we're going through like a marriage conflict. Like, you know, the trust issues and how we move forward, and it's like the city-
We're speaking from experience.
But I'm just sitting here like this, we can keep doing this, but like, the city is the children, and we really need to focus on the downtown area and how to make it viable and better. So, sorry, I'm just thinking that and I just had to share it.
Is there anybody else like?
Val is-
Val, are you, do you want to make a comment? Sure.
It's Valerie Bergstrom, one two two Forker Trail, and I am on the DDA board. And, you know, unfortunately, I've, I've missed the last meeting when some of what happened occurred due to kind of a family situation that, that came up at the last minute. So unfortunately, whenever you're in those kinds of situations, you, you start to hear things, and I'm sure that there's an element of truth to all of them and, and not an element of truth. But I don't really want to focus on that, I really want to move forward, I want to be part of the solution. If we're part of the problem, then we all need to take responsibility for it and come up with ways to do better. I think Karen's right, I think good communication's always important. You know, I used to say, if you send one email and you send another and people start, you know, to have bad feelings, then pick up the phone and talk to the person directly, because that's usually how you resolve things. So, as Karen said, I, you know, my cell phone, I pick it up, and if you have a question or concern about the DDA, and I can be part of that solution or bring it back to the board, I am very willing to do that. Our downtown is such a jewel, we have so much potential, and I just want to see us grow and prosper and serve the downtown business owners and the community. So, whatever I can do to do that and support, again, as an individual, I'm happy to do that, and that's-
Thank you very much. What was that?
Hi, so I'll, I'll take this opportunity, and I, I out of respect to all of you and all of you, because I always think of myself as an outsider, I'm contracted here until December, you've all been very, you know, welcoming with me, great, you know, helping me out, open to my ideas, and at the same time, I've had the luck of having a lot of communication with all of you at the same time, which is, it's love, but it can also be very interesting at times to see what people are thinking, what they're considering about each other. And again, I'm an outsider, and I got to tell you, one way to move forward here in Manistee, and I do not mean this disrespectfully, disrespectfully, but it's to stop getting personal. There is a lot of personal feelings in the work relationships here in Manistee that it's affecting things to move forward. I have people telling me, this person wants to get me fired. I was like, nobody, nobody ever plans to get you fired, it's not the way the world works. But I feel that if we do want to tackle, if we do want to be a solution, one, we got to accept, you know, our failures or problems or whatever thing we haven't done very well, and then tackle the communication. I feel like if you have a problem with Erin, like, hey Erin, you think Rising Tide sucks, how can I do to make it better? It's true, like, I've had people here that have told me, I don't think it's credible, and I've said, I appreciate that, what can I do to make it credible, how can I better report to all of you? But I feel that there is a lot of personal feelings here in Manistee, and I know it's because it's a small town, you all know each other, it happens, but the person, the level of the personal sentiment that is in the work here, it's-